I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order at 7:00 PM. invocation or moment of silence, Amanda Pickett.
Oh gosh, I do stand to see you just lied to me. On December 31st, an Enfield Public School staff member suffered an unfathomable loss. Although I know my words do not suffice, I'm hoping for some comfort to the family, friends, and EPS colleagues. Please join me in a moment of silence for Maddie. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Fire evacuation announcement. There's double doors behind you. Go out the double doors down to the parking lot. Double doors to my left, your right. Go down the stairs and out to the parking lot. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Pickett?
Here.
Mr. Ryder?
Here.
Mr. Ungeyer?
Here.
Mrs. Akri?
Here.
Dr. Kalman?
Here.
Mrs. Cushman?
Here.
Mr. Hamry?
Here.
Mr. LeBlanc?
Madam Chair?
Here.
Okay, item six, board guests. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Before we bring our guests up, I want to share something that I don't think anybody was there, so none of you know this. Last year, the state of Connecticut and through the governor's office put together a competitive grant process called Voices for Change, which was student-led initiatives and projects that had to be, it was very competitive, and ultimately get funded through the state of Connecticut, through the commissioner and the governor's office. At the CAAB CAPS convention back in November, the keynote speaker at the luncheon was Commissioner Russell Tucker. Knowing that you never play favorites typically when the commissioner speaks, she doesn't always point out individual school districts or good things that are happening in individual places, so she doesn't get caught for favoritism. But this year, she singled out two districts or two high schools essentially that went above and beyond, that she was extremely proud of and could not find a better way to represent the intention of what those fundings were used for and the fact that it was all student-driven. And Enfield High School was one of them. I didn't even tell Erin yet. I wanted to do it on TV. So congratulations. Tonight, we're going to welcome Mark Rapucci, who's become a regular at our board meetings. He's our pre-K through 12 music coordinator and United Sound voice for change advisers, Ashley Snell and Dan Bergman. And they're going to tell a little about the students and what the project is. Welcome.
I need the higher chair. I'm so excited to be here tonight to share about this wonderful program. And it was actually, it was just before the pandemic, Ashley brought the information to me about United Sound. And Ashley's a former student many years ago, went through Enfield High School and Fermi High School, and is now the Enfield High School band director. And she let me know about United Sound. And, you know, of course, during the pandemic, it wasn't time to bring a new course to the, you know, the program. And we jumped on the chance when Voices for Change happened. And she went out and elicited the help of students, put the proposal together, we worked on the budget together, and then sent everything in. The school voted on it, and as you know, we were awarded the program, $20,000 grant. We purchased equipment for students that may be unable to purchase them. We also provided some adaptive equipment if needed within that. And we basically paid the startup fee for United Sound. Now, United Sound is a national program. I had never heard of it before. I think there's only a handful of schools in the state of Connecticut that are currently running it.
We're the first high school.
We're the first high school. That's awesome. So we're just excited about that. And right now, it's running once a week after school. And when Ashley started to put this together, we also were looking for a special education teacher to come on board. And Dan, Mr. Dan Bergman and I went to CCSU together and worked on our 092. That was many years ago, too. And he is also a musician, and his son is in the program also. And they're working together. And they did bring mentors and new musicians with them tonight. And I'm going to let them introduce those members to you and tell you a little bit more about the program.
Awesome. So thank you so much for having us here. We're really excited to be here. To tell you just a little bit about myself and why I brought this to the table in the first place, going into college, my vision and my goal as an educator was to make sure that I never had to turn a student away from making music with people. So throughout my studies in my undergrad, that was really a focus for me. How could I bring kids into the classroom? For my master's degree, I had a book funded by Syracuse University that I wrote called Band Together: Creating an Inclusive Instrumental Classroom, that provides cost-effective, time-effective, and adaptations that do not impact the quality of the musical ensemble. So truly, so band directors like me don't have an excuse to turn kids away. So I saw United Sound at a conference. I worked for three years in Virginia prior to coming back to Enfield. And I saw a group perform at a conference and just thought it checked every box of everything that I stand for as a teacher and was so excited to be able to bring it back to the town that I'm from. So I would like to bring up our chapter presidents, as well as some of our peer mentors and new musicians that are involved. We have three new musicians that play percussion, saxophone, and trombone. Each student has, each new musician has three peer mentors that work with them in a variety of ways, and we're going to have the chapter presidents talk about that.
Hi, my name is Charlotte Pulchonary. I'm a chapter president of United Sound at Enfield High School. So United Sound meets every Monday from 2:15 to 3:00 PM. A typical day at United Sound looks like we will come in, we'll sit in a circle, we'll have a question of the day, and this kind of gives us a chance to spend time together as a full group and get to know one another. Some example questions that we've had are, what's your best Halloween costume? What's your favorite winter activity? Stuff like that. And after this, we move to small groups where each new musician has three peer mentors, like Mrs. Shell mentioned, and will work with them on their instrument. So one mentor will play along, another one will help with reading music, and the third mentor will help with anything else they notice, such as posture while playing the instrument, making sure you're sitting up straight so that you have full lung capacity and sitting up at the end of your seat with hand position and fingering while playing the instrument.
Our new musicians started by learning on how to make a sound on their instruments and how to hold them. They learned a few notes and figured out how to play cross buns. Our new musicians also performed at our winter concert, a piece called "Where Worlds End", which was written about creating music for the joy of music.
United Sound has been great for me because it has helped me learn new collaborative skills. I've also learned things about my own instrument that I didn't know before. Being a mentor has helped me broaden my knowledge on components of music and deepen my understanding of other instruments. Most importantly, as my role as a president, I've also learned how to communicate effectively, build a welcoming environment, and become a responsible leader.
United Sound has been great for me because watching people learn and develop skills in real time is magical. It makes me so happy to see others proud of themselves and grow as people, whether that be our peer mentors or new musicians.
Okay, I'm sure our board members have comments or questions, and I will start with Ms. Pickett.
So first, Dr. Kalman and I are chuckling because we both agree, we don't remember being that smart in high school. So thank you for your presentation. But for me, I think this clearly demonstrates the importance of student-led initiatives. You all know what it takes to make a welcoming, safe, inclusive school community, and this is such a great demonstration of that. I also think that this is a demonstration of equity in action. This is inclusive, there's a sense of belonging, it's beneficial to the new musicians and the mentors. So thank you, students and staff supporting this. I think it's great. My question is, what do you need to sustain this, and how can we help it grow?
We actually will be presenting at the Board of Ed Curriculum Committee as a new course within the school day. So we're hoping, one of the issues, you know, can be having access to it, and if it's in the school day, it's much more accessible to students. We definitely believe music is for all. The grant covered a lot of the upstart costs. Basically, from here, it's a registration fee per student that we can handle through the registration budget. Yeah?
Pretty self-sustaining at this point, which is fabulous.
Well, I love, A, that you're already thinking innovatively about how you can make the program even more accessible, because that was going to be one of my questions, but it sounds like you already have an action plan, and I can't wait to see it come to curriculum.
Mrs. Akri?
I want to thank all of you at United Sound for this great music program. I really love this concept. I'm very happy to see that it exists because, as you know, I'm a retired music teacher also. Kudos to the seven students. When I was reading, you know, the background about your program, to the seven students who wrote the proposal for the United Sound and the fact that you thought of these special students who would greatly benefit for, you know, from such a great program with all your help and support, the peer mentoring, helping with fingering, you know, and helping them read the music, because it takes a lot of coordination and discipline and practice and so on. Also, thank you for your hard work, your thoughtfulness of thinking of others in this situation. Now they have a chance to, you know, learn and become musicians themselves, which is great. I also like the fact that they are able to perform with, you know, the ensembles with the other students. That's great. So therefore, I am looking forward to the next concert, seeing all the students. Thank you very much.
Dr. Kalman?
This is really inspiring. And I think it's really important now because there's so much emphasis on language and math achievements, which is perfectly appropriate. But let's face it, there's such an emphasis largely because that's how students are tested. And sometimes I think that in the process, we lose sight of the really creative things about learning, such as music and art. And so I just think this is very inspiring, and I want to congratulate you on a job really well done.
Mr. Hamry?
So first off, congratulations to everybody that is involved in this program. I just can't speak enough to how amazed I am that this program exists, and kudos to Michelle for recognizing the opportunities and making it happen here in town. To the two co-presidents, leadership is something you demonstrate. It's not a title. So very well that you're demonstrating that. I like to see that, and it carries over to those you're leading. It gives them a tool to carry with them in life and will become leaders themselves in their own right. To the simple act of playing music, nothing about it is simple. There's art, there's science, there's math. It's a very convoluted and wonderful thing. I picked up a guitar when I was 12. I haven't put it down yet, and I'm still not good, but I'm getting better. So I love to see this kind of involvement and the inclusion, as Amanda had said, that it's great to see everybody that wants to get involved be given the opportunity, the chance to be involved. And Mr. Rapucci, Michelle, you'd invited me to drop in one day. I really look forward to it. Schedules allow. So one of these days, I'll take you up on the offer. I look forward to that tremendously. Thank you very much.
Mr. Ungeyer?
So I'll just try to keep it very brief. Congratulations to you all. The good doctor said about, you know, language and math, but I've always seen music as language. Music is a language, a language to those who play it and a language to those who hear it. Because there's interpretation, notes, and it's a language unto itself. And every one of you should be very, very proud, from the students to the teachers to the coordinators, for what you're doing, and we are very proud of you. Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Ryder?
So I had a quick question for our students that helped write the grant. Grant writing is a very difficult thing to do, and the fact that you guys not only did it well enough to get the grant, but that you awarded the grant money to create this program is commendable. And I hope that all the students that were involved with helping author that grant, put that on your academic resumes, because that'll be a skill set that will make you stand out from others. It's a very challenging thing to do from anybody up here or in the audience that work with nonprofits and things of that nature. It's very commendable. The word that stood out to me from all of your talks was magical. I believe that this is magical, and thank you for that. And then my other question for our peer students that are helping to run this program and that volunteer to be a part of it, will any of you be sitting up here as Ms. Snell is? Shall? Do any of you plan on going into music education? Okay. So perhaps we'll see you back in the seat soon. Thank you again.
Thank you all for coming this evening. When we had first heard of United Sound, we had gotten an email. And, Mr. Hamry, we were all very excited to hear of it. I am not talented enough to play an instrument, but I have often said that music speaks to my soul. It could be a song that somebody thinks is crazy that speaks to my soul, but music can definitely have a real calming effect on your lives. And I'm glad that you guys have this program and this outlet to lead and form friendships and bond over it, the music and the teaching. I also wanted to say that I really, like Amanda, appreciate the forward thinking and that you're going to be attending the Curriculum Committee to have this be a course, which right now, you're doing it, it looks like after school one day a week, but if we can have it be a more robust type of program at Enfield High, that would benefit everybody. And how many do you have? Do you have an enrollment number? Did I miss that, or is there?
Right now, we have three new musicians, and there's three mentors per musician. So we're hoping to grow that number.
Right. And perhaps if you can have it during the school day, then that would be a great way to grow that.
Unified sports and unified arts?
That's right. That's excellent. The other thing, again, like Ms. Pickett said, I'm a huge proponent of things or programs run by students for students, because, again, you can form those connections and have, you know, each other to lean on while you're learning and things like that. I did notice in the next steps that you have a potential meeting with the Commissioner of Education, and the date and the time is to be determined. I hope you get to do that. There's a lot of good things that happen here in Enfield, and I would love for the state to know that we have this program and other towns applying for grants are adopting this program as well, so.
We're actually looking at attending, there's an alliance proposal for alliance districts that's at U-Hart, and we're going to go and bring the program there and communicate it, and hopefully other districts will start to pick it up.
I think that's great.
The goal is to share it with other alliance districts so we can kind of bounce ideas off of one another, and that's through a connection with mine, which is really fabulous.
Sure, it's probably exciting to be the leader in this and to really start it, but then I'm sure you're going to want to be able as yourselves to collaborate and see what other districts are doing and what's working for them or what's not, and have that collaboration yourself. So I think that's good, and I think it's an exciting time, and I really appreciate all of the students. I appreciate the staff, too, but I appreciate the students for their dedication, all of you, and thank you again.
Madam Chair, just before they leave?
Sure.
I appreciate the Madam Chair mentioning this, but I want to make sure that it doesn't get lost in translation. This was a big deal, and you should all be extremely proud for what you did, as we are of you. But as the chairwoman said, this isn't the commissioner just maybe scheduling a time to come. She is actually, I guess I should probably get mad, if she doesn't come, it's going to be my fault. She's never come to visit us, let's say that. We were contacted by the commissioner's office to specifically come see you guys and what you guys have created. So that's not just a shout-out at a meeting with a bunch of people at CAAB, it was, I want to see this for myself. So that's a testament to the work that you guys all did. So great job, and keep it up.
Can I ask one more question? I'm sorry.
Reading.
Would this be something that is just high school, or is this something that you could see, like, going down to the middle school?
No, we hope to continue it down to the middle school also.
Excellent.
Because we're currently the first high school in Connecticut to adopt this program, however, there are, I believe, like, four, we're the first high school to adopt it in Connecticut, but there are, I believe, about like four middle schools who have it in Connecticut. So if we can get that in Enfield, too, if we have the resources, then that would be great.
One of the middle school programs is actually East Windsor.
Oh, perfect.
We haven't spoken with them yet.
No, but, yeah, it's on the to-do list. And seeing that, we were able to check out the band rooms at JFK, I think it's a perfect time to be able to introduce a program because it's much more expansive than it was prior to the renovation over there, so.
And all of you are welcome anytime.
Perfect. I will take you up on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
Bring your guitar.
Thank you again.
Thanks a lot.
I just wanted to let you know, we're going to start the superintendent's report. You're not rude if you want to head on out of the meeting. Okay, item seven, the superintendent's report. Mr. Dreszek?
I believe we're actually going to start with our student reps, so who wants to go first? Don't all jump at once.
Okay, Morgan?
So hello and welcome back. We are now in the new year with some exciting announcements. We actually ended up extending the door decorating contest at the high school until about January 1st, and we came out with a winner. It was Ms. Grouse's door. Her door was absolutely adorable. It was Grinch stealing a Christmas tree. I loved it. Congratulations to all six of you that got the Duncan gift cards, and congratulations to Ms. Grouse with your special trophy that I'm jealous of. Midterms and final exams, I know no one wants to hear about this, but they start next Thursday, so make sure you start talking to your teachers about what you need to do or what's missing. Grades close this Friday, by the way. Thursday, the 18th, is 1A and 2A. The 19th is 3A and 4A. Friday, the 20th, is 1B and 2B. And that Monday, the 23rd, is the last full day of testing for most students, which will be 3B and 4B. The 24th is our last day of Semester 1. You will visit all eight of your classes to find out your final exam results and scores. Semester 2 starts the next day, January 25th, which will be an A day, and it is also a half-day, so win-win there. And seniors and senior parents, I know you're tired of me talking about yearbook. Very sorry. Senior year is a big deal, I guess. We need you to send in elementary, middle school, and high school photos, specifically group photos. We are doing a big throwback page to commemorate everything that we have been through this year, or the past few years.
Thank you. Kayla?
Okay, so on January 7th, robotics season started and will run until early March, and throughout this time, they will be competing in various competitions throughout the state for our sporting events. On, oh, sorry, on Wednesday, the 4th, wrestling held their first home meet against Weathersfield. Yesterday, girls' basketball had a home game against Southington, which they won. Boys' basketball is currently playing at Glastonbury today. And boys' hockey will have a home game against Trittown Friday, the 20th, at 7:45. And we also have some concerts coming up. JFK Chorus will have a concert on January 18th. The JFK Orchestra will have a concert on January 19th. Crandall will have a concert at Enfield High on January 26th. Whitney will also have a concert at Enfield High on January 27th. And then Parkman will be holding a concert at Enfield High on February 2nd.
Great, thank you. Mr. Dreszek?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's her time back, so Happy New Year. We'll start the new year with some good news. I want to thank Ms. Diane Edwards, who are Director of School Nutrition. We are able to extend free lunch for all students throughout the month of February. As I said before, the way the process worked is the smart funding had expired, that we were trying to get creative in order to extend that as long as possible. I give a great thanks to our Nutrition Service Department, in particular Diane, of trying to make sure, as early as possible to notify families that it'll continue. So as of yesterday, or this morning, or whenever, really, not too long ago, she was able to confirm that we can continue free lunches for students through the month of February, with hopes to continue as long as possible. As a byway of just sort of a brief update, because it's been a few weeks since we've met, at our last meeting, obviously, we had a presentation from Ms. Middleton, our chief academic officer, regarding, you know, sort of a snapshot of where we were with some of our standardized test scores. And that last culmination of what we've done at the beginning, since the beginning of this year, as we said, we started off with our equity statement, we talked about SEL, and we sort of, the culmination of all of that work that we've done since the school year has begun, ultimately will come when we present a budget to the board, which I hope to do by, at our next meeting. There are some, it's a weird year when it comes to planning and budgeting. Just pick up a newspaper or listen to some of the things that are happening. It's a new legislature, there's a new process, there's a lot of grant funding through COVID relief that are expiring, so it's taking us a little bit longer than it traditionally would, but my intention is to bring it at our next meeting. But I did want to sort of fill in, and one of the questions that had come up through, you know, prior to Ms. Middleton's presentation, and ultimately during it, was, you know, we know, and I think she did a very good job articulating sort of a snap, this is our first real snapshot of where our kids are coming out of the last couple of years. And one of the questions, and I put you on the spot, Mr. LeBlanc, I think, I believe you asked, was, okay, we know what the numbers are, but what are we going to do? So at this point, I at least wanted to address one of the immediate concerns that we've had since we've been able to start sort of drilling down on some of our results. And there is a concern, obviously, in numerous areas, but one of the graver concerns that we have are, in particular with our elementary schools, are kids that are in grades two and five. And the reason for that is it's January. And we know the impact that the pandemic has had on learning, but we also know there's already, you know, a natural setback for some students when they make a transition to a new school. So particularly our students in grades two and grade five, we know that we've got them for six more months in their building, and even though they're not moving, they are going to a new school. They're not just getting new teachers, they're getting a whole new staff, in some cases, new friends, you know, an entire new building, a new time that they start. So we know that we have to put some really direct targeted intervention for those students, not to minimize what the needs of other students are, but right now, as I said, funding has become a challenge with some funding streams expiring. So one of the things you'll hear about in the coming days or weeks is, we don't have enough time in the school day to do that additional targeted intervention, because if we do, we're not providing students the other things that we're required to and they also need. So that's always been a challenge for us. We've done after-school programs in the past. We've had a Student Success Academy in years past, that was prior to COVID. But one of the things that Michelle and her team are working on, and we've been able to sort of reconfigure some of our grant funding through Title II, was to create an after-school opportunity for those kids that are already identified, when we have the data, in those particular areas, being reading and math, and offer after-school intervention for a short period of time for those kids. I know I'm going to get emails tomorrow that says, well, I want my kid in there, too. Please don't take this the wrong way. Right now, it has to be very focused on grades two and five, and those kids that we have the academic data on to show where they are and where the interventions need to be. If funding and staffing permit, we will start expanding that program into different areas, obviously going back into four, into one. There are interventions happening at the middle school. We talked a bit about grade eight, and those students are now in grade nine. Those are all in play, but the after-school opportunity, and it wouldn't be an everyday opportunity, it would be, you know, most likely one day a week. I know transportation is an issue. We're trying to work through all that, those things now. The reason I'm bringing this up is one of our biggest concerns is, we don't know if we'll have the staffing to do this. So really, this is self-serving in my part of doing this at a microphone. For any staff that are listening, when this opportunity comes out, please say yes. We've secured grant fund, you know, some of our grant funding through Title II in order to support this initiative, because we all have a big concern, and I, me in particular, is we've got these and these particular students in their classrooms with their teachers for six more months, and we need to make sure that we're putting And we need to make sure that we're putting the direct interventions and targeted instruction for these kids to make sure they're in the best position when they make that transition. So I appreciated the question when it was asked. I didn't have an answer at the time because we were still kind of working this through. But I also don't want you or the viewing public to think, all right, well, we put a bunch of numbers on the screen. We're not doing anything. That's not the case. This year, as I said, is pretty unique, particularly when it comes to different funding mechanisms. And in addition to, it's not a surprise to anybody that there is a staffing crisis throughout the country, not just in Enfield, not just in Connecticut, but all over the place. So the other piece of that, that I, you know, this probably won't be popular, but I, the decision that I have to make is, do I say this now and give people time to plan? Or do I wait until I have a definitive answer? I'm going to err on the side of caution. At being a parent myself, I know you can never have enough too much time to plan. For the last two years, we've been able to offer a pretty robust summer school. It looks highly unlikely for this summer that we're going to be able to offer the same programming that we have over the past two years. And there's a lot of reasons for that. One, obviously, is the funding streams are no longer there. But the other piece is, we did have a struggle trying to find enough staff to adequately run summer school last year. I know we provided transportation. We had the most robust summer school program we've ever had. I would love to keep it, but it doesn't seem like it's a reality at this point. So I just believe the fair thing to do is to let parents know who might be planning on that, to say that, I don't want anybody shocked come May where we say we're not doing it. So doesn't mean we won't. It just means that it's unlikely at this point, and I just felt it would be the fairest thing to do to let families know that. And the last thing I just want to mention, and I'll ask for anyone who's watching, who signed up to be part of my advisory committee, as I said at a previous meeting, that I got an overwhelming response of about 150 people. What I did is I did send out on my own, I didn't make Guy do it, was I sent out a message to every email address that made it within the deadline, sort of explaining where we are with the save the date, you're going to get another message. The only questions I haven't heard back from, I had to do it in a way that I'm not technologically savvy enough to know if it worked or not. So if anyone's watching and you didn't get it, at least one of you let me know. I don't need 150 of them. And I'll make sure at this point, I'll break the glass and have Guy resend it out the right way. Did I get, did you get it? Okay, it didn't work. That's my fault. I thought I figured it out. I'll get it squared away. But we're looking to start the first of a series of meetings at some point before the end of the month. So you would have known that if I knew how to work the computer, so I apologize. But I don't want people sitting at home saying, you keep talking about this and nothing happened. I sent it, it just didn't go. So other than that, that will conclude the superintendent's report.
Did you mention the JFK reo?
Oh, I'm sorry, I skipped right over that. Because I know you're all going to talk about it, but I will mention it. This Thursday at 6:00 PM, the official grand opening of JFK will take place. The opening ceremony as well as the ribbon cutting, and then there will also be public tours available. So we welcome everyone who's interested in seeing the building. I know some board members had the opportunity to see it prior to us leaving for break. And I'm, just based on your faces, my assumption is you are as impressed as we are and thankful. And this is really an opportunity for the community to see what they invested in and the opportunity that our kids have. So we welcome everyone. I will save my thank yous and all that, patting on the back for, because, Madam Chair, you and I have to speak that night as well. I believe, Mr. Vice Chair, you have a speaking role, so I can't come up with two different remarks. So I'm going to save them for Thursday night. That will conclude the superintendent's report.
Thank you. Item eight, audiences? Just a few reminders regarding our audiences. You must be an Enfield resident to participate in the audience portion of the meeting. We ask that you state your name and address. Board members cannot respond back to you during this portion of the meeting. The board members can respond during their board member comments if they choose to do so. We also cannot respond to student or personnel matters. We strongly ask that you refrain from personalities. We also ask that you refrain from yelling out during audiences or board members during their comments. The other thing I wanted to mention is, in our bylaws, 9325, it explains exactly what the audience portion means. And I think that we have to do this as a reminder. During this period, let me see, sorry, I'm at the wrong part. When you come up as an audience member, you're coming up to speak to the Board of Education. This is a meeting of the Board of Education. It is not a meeting of the superintendent. The superintendent is actually a part of our meeting. This meeting is to conduct board business, to approve calendars, to approve policy. So when you come up here, you're coming up to address us. The superintendent, the deputy superintendent, will not be engaging. It's in the bylaw, 9325, on what the audience role is and who they are going to be speaking to when they come up to the chair. I'll allow five minutes this evening. Kelly Jackson?
Kelly Jackson, 30 Main Lane, is it on? Yep, it's on. I just came up here for one thing. One, Happy New Year. Two, if anybody can talk to somebody at building and grounds, Eli Whitney has a pothole that is ginormous that is going to sink our buses. It's right where the buses come in. So it's like a fun game, trying to finagle around the curve of it. So if anybody can talk to them and let them know, it'd be greatly appreciated. That's it.
Thank you. Peter Genitis?
Peter, Peter Genitis, 3 Farmstead Circle. I didn't even know you guys were meeting tonight. And if, on your agenda, number 10, is that going to be dealing with removing silent meditation and prayer?
The board members cannot communicate with you at this time.
I don't know if I want to go any, if it doesn't, then I have nothing to say. But if it, okay, if it does, I do have something to say. Okay, removal of a moment of silent meditation and prayer. You are doing something, trying to move something, remove something, that is as American as apple pie. Public meetings have in the past and present been meeting with moments of silent meditation and prayer of some sort. I personally am agnostic. So what your religious beliefs are is no, nothing to me. It really isn't. That's your belief, your individual belief. But to do something like this is really, I don't know. I would never entertain removing moment of silent meditation and prayer. What's next? The removal of the Pledge of Allegiance? We know there are some systems in this country that have already done that. Is that going to be next here? This board has made, I think, in my opinion, some of the most ridiculous decisions I've ever seen. You have already interjected yourself, and that's as far as I got, as far as what I wanted to write, interject yourself into areas of the government, which you are in this town, into the raising of kids and what will be taught to kids that are not part of any curriculum I ever saw when I taught. It never got that far. But you guys are doing it. You're allowing it to happen. You have supposedly made some mistakes, and boy, they were mistakes. Some of your comments and some of your, your things that you say didn't happen, but did happen, and I don't know. This is crazy. But if that's what you're going to be voting on, I would beg you, urge you, not to pass removing that. Boards, commissions, councils have always done it in this town and probably in most towns around America at athletic events. You name it, it's just part of Americana. Please don't do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Liz Davis?
Good evening. My name's Liz Davis and I reside at 201 North Maple Street. First of all, Happy New Years. Second, I wanted to say about the United Sound, like, is that amazing or what? We have some of the most talented, amazing kids around. And what just showcases it all is our amazing staff and educators that just keep on enhancing and enriching our education system in Enfield. Couldn't be more thankful that this is where my child goes to school because of the staff and the leadership and all the educators we have. So I personally want to thank them for that. And I can't wait to be able to hear all this, you know, and watch it. It's just exciting to see us moving and doing such great things. I wasn't even thinking of that, but since a prior person spoke saying, if it's meant to remove the prayer, I'd have to say, just because we've been doing something forever definitely doesn't mean it's right. We've seen that. History repeating itself is pretty wrong, as we see. It was just normal to spread hate and racism and all this, and we're just doing it again. Why? Because it was just what you always did? No, we educate ourselves and we move forward to do the right thing. That's why this is the Board of Education. Education, you educate yourself and move along with the times and with the education. So I, for one, do not believe a prayer should be at a Board of Ed meeting. You want to have it at another meeting, that's fine. Not a Board of Education meeting that represents 5,000 different students and families. A prayer should not be at a public Board of Education meeting. Let me see if there's any. Yeah, so I think that's it. I probably forgot a few things. But I do want to thank you for everything that you do. And please keep looking forward and moving our education system forward. What a blessing to see. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Kathy, was there an additional speaker that? Come forward. I need your name and your address, and there's five minutes to speak.
Thank you. Jonathan Grande, Spruise Road, Enfield, Connecticut. As Liz said, Happy New Year. Thank you for all your efforts. Appreciate you, fellow Spruce Landers, a couple neighbors here, so it's good to see that. And fellow town folks, I appreciate everything y'all do. I want to echo what Liz said. I think there is too much hate. And removing prayers is hate against those who believe in God, no matter what God you may serve. I don't think that it's offensive to anybody to pray. The NFL outlawed prayer and the right to show expression towards God. With Tim Tebow, if y'all remember, 11 years ago, the Tebow, everybody would say, oh, he can't do that, can't do that, NFL made it, can't do it. Last week, a little over a week ago, a Buffalo Bills football player nearly died on the field. I don't know if there's football fans here or not, but the whole team, both teams, Bills and the opposing team, came together, kneeled down and prayed. They did away with that rule that day. When it comes down to life and death and what really matters, that's what's important. We're not dealing with life and death stuff here with the Board of Ed. I get it, there's two conflicting opinions. One is freedom of speech, First Amendment, we should be able to pray. The second is the Establishment Clause, separation of church and state. So there's tension in there, and I get it. So if, and I think there's precedents where the Board of Ed can say, yeah, we, we act as if we're the school and we don't want to have preference of one religion over another, and let's make it secular and eliminate that. I wouldn't like that, but that would, that would be completely fine and legal. However, I don't think there's any harm in having a moment of silence. So if you do away with the prayer, and hopefully Liz would agree, too, a moment of silence would be appropriate. People can reflect, can contemplate, and if they so choose, pray. And it would be silent and therefore non-offensive to anybody who doesn't have the same religious beliefs that somebody else may have. So I hope you consider that when you guys go to vote on that. And that's all I want to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the audience portion is now closed. Moving on to item nine, board member comments. Ms. Akri, we will start with you.
Hi, I'm speaking from the desk of Mr. Andrew DePere at Prudence Crandall School. He says it was great to have all his students back after a very relaxing vacation. The students are continuing to work hard academically. He's talking, he's going to focus on the computer lab, and he's talking about all grade levels have finished units on digital citizenship. For example, the third graders determined what was safe to share online by distinguishing between private and personal information. Third graders learned how to create a strong password to protect their privacy. In the fourth grade classes, they delved deeper into online behaviors by exploring what they called Netiquette. Students acted as cyber sleuths, looking at real examples of phishing, which is connected to email, smishing text, or phishing phone. All these are scams. And they learned how to protect themselves to ensure that their information is not compromised. And the fifth grade techies looked at the implications social media can have in the real world. They began by assessing their digital footprint, then examined privacy policies, user age restrictions, and how oversharing can negatively impact a person's digital reputation and privacy. He says that finally, we will be holding an upcoming Literacy and Numeracy Family Engagement Night, which I believe is Wednesday, January 25th. Students will have the opportunity to read and play math games and enjoy some delicious hot chocolate with their parents and friends. So that's my report from Crandall. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Akri. Dr. Kalan?
First of all, a quick COVID reminder. According to the CDC, Hartford and five other counties are now in the high orange category of COVID incidents, indicating a very high rate of active infection. The State Department of Health has therefore recommended that residents consider wearing masks in public indoor spaces to reduce the chances of spread. So with respect to Kite, Kite membership, I think I mentioned the last time that the leadership had nominated Carol LeLiberte to be the next chairperson. And at the Kite member, the last Kite meeting held about a week ago, membership has officially and unanimously voted to elect Carol. And she will be succeeding Leanne Bullier. Regarding the Enfield Child Development Center, all 28 spots have been filled. ECDC will receive $26,880 from the State School Readiness and Child Daycare Grant Program since 50% of the children served are living at or below 300% of the federal poverty level. These funds will be used for staffing, as well as for professional development, enrichment activities, and supplies. As part of its quality enhancement efforts, ECDC has been conducting one-on-one virtual sessions for the staff focusing on play-based learning and executive function. Julie Carroll is the liaison for the McKenney Vento in Enfield. Homelessness is characterized by more than simply living on the streets. It can include students doubling up on living accommodations, living in shelters, and living in motels. Enfield schools, social workers, and school secretaries are those employees most often responsible for identifying these homeless families. And social workers are responsible for referring them to medical, dental, and mental health resources, posting notices on homelessness in the community, and procuring funding for school functions and transportation. Ms. Carroll has a grant to address many of the issues related to homelessness, such as hygiene, clothing, school supplies, and transportation. as hygiene, clothing, school supplies, and transportation. With regard to Sparkler, 38 families at ECDC have signed up for this developmental and behavioral health screening initiative. Work is currently underway to partner with the Food Shelf in offering Sparkler to its clientele. In other, excuse me, in other Kite news, flyers are being prepared for the Heritage Fair. Efforts are currently underway to recruit groups representing a variety of countries and cultural backgrounds. The fair will be held on February 25 at JFK from 11:30 in the morning until 4 o'clock in the afternoon. There will also be entertainment reflecting the cultural diversity of our community. The Leadership Work Group will soon be undertaking its yearly review of the goals of the Kite Organization for the coming year. A survey of the Kite membership will soon be conducted. Kite will be launching an Infant and Early Childhood Mental Health Committee. A sign-up sheet was circulated at the meeting. The date of the first meeting has yet to be determined. Kite and Enfield Public Schools will be working to bring back a coaching program for kindergarten teachers to promote early childhood executive functioning. This initiative will be conducted in collaboration with the Gassell Institute. The Parent Leadership Association still has a number of slots available. Please go to the Kite website to find out how you can apply. People Empowering People is still looking for a Spanish-speaking person to be trained as a facilitator. Please contact the Enfield Public Schools if you would like to help. First Readers will be sponsoring a trivia night on February 25. Please consult the First Readers' website. Also, the First Readers' Ceremony of the Year will be held on March 6 at JFK. The December 2 Gen Meeting had to be rescheduled for January 19. The primary issue to be discussed will be procuring affordable and high-quality childcare in Enfield. With regards to Head Start, the Policy Committee met on January 6. Enrollment remains maximal at 102. The attendance rate is 81%, and ideally Head Start likes to keep the rate at about 85% or higher, but 81% is pretty good considering the triple epidemic we face, namely flu, COVID, and RSV. The federal grant was submitted last December, as I mentioned previously. Head Start is still awaiting a response. An educational update, the Buildings Unit is nearing completion. The next unit, Unit 3, is entitled Forces in Motion, including such things as push and pull forces. Second Step, Unit 3, focuses on emotional management, highlighting the management of anger. With respect to disabilities, 17 children have IEPs, 2 have global developmental disabilities, 8 children have speech challenges, and 7 have an autism spectrum disorder. There are 3 children in evaluation for special education services. In the month of December, there were 170 active Ready Rosie readers, users. Themes included building something, gift-giving, and healthy habits. Children who enroll in Ready Rosie may continue the program until age 3 regardless of Head Start enrollment status. Looking at health issues, all vision screens have been completed, and virtually all children have received their flu vaccines. That concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman. Ms. Cushman?
I just wanted to start off by offering my condolences to all who knew and loved Maddie. Her loss, I'm sure, is tremendous, and I just wanted to assure you that. I'm sure there's many in the community, including myself, her thoughts, and prayers are with Last month, Mr. Ungeyer shared a story that was, and he found printed, it was a story of a teacher who had done some, an activity with her students, and the profound effect that it had on the lives of the students for years afterwards. And I just couldn't help but think there's probably many in our community that would have a similar story or account to tell. I'm sure, you know, Kayla and Morgan, you guys probably have stories to tell, and I can't imagine the stories that are going to come out of United Sound, you know, of the lives that are really transformed and changed through those interactions. And it was relayed to me about a student at Parkman who had had to have some surgery unexpectedly just before Thanksgiving, and just the way that the teacher and the classmates of this student really rallied around this student and brainstormed ideas to really bless them and reach out to them virtually. It's one of the benefits of technology. And they were able to really, I'm sure, build some memories for that student, just making them feel special and included and involved. And I just think, can't help but think that the students that were doing, that were blessing their classmate, you know, are just as affected as the student who received all those well wishes and interactions while they were away. So, I just, I'm thankful for our community. I'm thankful for all the things that are happening in our schools, and I just look forward to hearing more of those stories. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cushman. Mr. Hamery?
Thank you. Excuse me. We'll start off with the JFK update, and kudos to Leslie for sending me the update on this one. It's a pretty lengthy one. Tomorrow is the next PTO meeting. It's going to be a virtual meeting via Teams at 6:30, and connect with JFK through the JFK website or Facebook page for the meeting link. Apologies in advance, I won't be able to attend, I'm already double-booked on two other things. This Friday, Hat Day, students are encouraged to bring in a dollar to wear a hat to school and support the Student Council. And I believe I saw a note in the information about that that said no hoodies would be allowed instead of a hat, so it is a hat specifically. Earbooks are now on sale through Life Touch. Again, find the website for that. Winter Chorus, as you mentioned earlier, Kaylee? I'm sorry. Kayla, sorry. I'm working on this. The two concerts, Winter Chorus next Wednesday, Winter Orchestra next Thursday, and if I can make it to those, I'm going to be there because, again, these students are amazing for their talents that they're learning in such a short amount of time during a very busy day. They sent a reminder for, check the January newsletter for monthly information and important dates, and I do very much look forward to the walkthrough happening Thursday. We had the opportunity to be there last month to get a preliminary walkthrough, and I would really love to see as many families attend as possible so they can see, as Superintendent mentioned, the amount of effort, thought, and innovative design that went into the building to bring everything to the level that we've not yet seen before, with the exception of Enfield High, but even additional improvements that Enfield High doesn't have from my very base knowledge. To the United Sound, again, very, very excited to have that program in town, and kudos to Michelle and Mr. Pucci for bringing that in. Look forward to that hitting the middle school at some point and the potentials that this will have. Ms. Cushman, I believe you nailed it right on the head there, that this is going to have a profound impact on many students, if it can be a maintained opportunity to demonstrate the way to connect through music to the students and among the students. I really do love that aspect of it. And I've got a few other things, but that'll fall under the ECAC report. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamery. Mr. LeBlanc?
Good evening. Where did I go with my current thought? So, when, I think when, this is my second term on the Board of Ed, and so much of it has been surrounding COVID and the situations we were dealt with during those years. And not that we haven't before, but I think this is really encouraging to see, and it's good stuff that is happening, I think, now that, last year was about, we saw the light at the end of the tunnel of COVID, and we figured out, okay, now we know how to get back into schools and get back on a normal basis. And then after that, it was, okay, now what's our, what's, what's the results of what happened over the last couple of years? And I think the way these last few meetings have gone and the reports that were given by multiple departments, I think now we got the data, and how do you figure out what you're going to do with that data? Well, you need a plan of action to follow that. And it's really encouraging to me to see that data taken and now plans of action are being put into place. So, I think I'm encouraged after your report tonight, especially with the grades 2 through 5, and the course of action that's going to be implemented to help those students. That's why I joined the Board of Ed, to look at that stuff and see what can be done to increase student achievement, and I think we're back on track, and it feels good to see that stuff happening. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ungeyer?
So, I want to start by saying that, so very sorry to hear about the passing of Maddie, and I just want to say to her parents and her brothers, her whole family, that just accept our condolences, my condolences, my family's condolences at your loss, and that you are in our thoughts and that you are in our prayers. I have something to report on Hazenville Memorial School, and that is that, a couple of small things, is that Hazenville Memorial collected some 410 pounds of food for the Enfield Food Shelf over the holiday break there. So, that's very commendable and very generous of them to collect that food for them. And then the January 17, Tuesday, on the 17th, is the PTO meeting. It's a virtual Teams meeting. And I talked with Lisa Hunter, saying, you know, why is it virtual Teams? Why is it Teams meeting and not, you know, everybody getting together like we did earlier? And she says, because they're getting, they're getting more participation through the Teams' virtual PTO meeting than they were with the in-person meeting. So, it's proving to be more effective and more inclusive by having a virtual meeting. On December 20, we had a robotics field trip that we had scheduled to Boston Dynamics in Waltham, just outside of Boston, Massachusetts, and met at the school earlier in the morning, and took a bus to Waltham, to Boston Dynamics. This was coordinated with John Dag and Buzz Robotics and Robotics, Carolyn Marr and Ms. Jefferson, and they did a fantastic job. I was fortunate enough to be able to attend that field trip and did help in some way of coordinating that with Boston Dynamics. So, we went and we got a tour of the facility, and it was amazing. If you could imagine these robots, I just want to say this about Boston Dynamics, is that they are a premier world-class robotics manufacturer. And the good Superintendent reminded me later that they were featured on 60 Minutes, and I had forgotten that. But it was a rare opportunity for our students at Enfield High School to attend, and for some of them, certainly it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity for what we got to see, which was pretty amazing, because these robots were parading around, and if you could imagine something that looks like a dog, about the size of a German shepherd, without the head and without the tail, and painted yellow, like a school bus yellow, and every one of our robotics students could control them. And so, they had several of them. You could go forward and backward and over obstacles and upstairs and around and downstairs, forwards and backwards. It was pretty amazing. And then they put a demonstration on for our students where they had a robot that was almost humanoid, call it, and this thing did some dancing, and it jumped up on a table, like about the size of this table right here, and it did a backflip right off it and landed on its feet. It was, it was pretty amazing what these robots did, and it was very inspiring to our Buzz Robotics students and our robotics students. Of all the eligible robotics students, every single one of them signed up for this field trip. As a matter of fact, they used it as an opportunity to take their class, their robotics class picture, which they did, in front of some of the robots right there. So, it was a really nice opportunity for them. I want to say personally that I was very, very proud of them because they were actually well, well-behaved. There was just, they were just perfect, well-behaved. And thanks to Caroline Marr, because she, she was, you know, very assertive in maintaining their behavior, so, which was, which was, she did really, really good at that. And so, even the bus driver did a fantastic job. So, it turned out to be a really, really good day, and I'm hoping that perhaps, you know, the robotics folks, kids, and could come in and give a little presentation of what we saw there. So, it was, it was an excellent day. And let's see. Oh, and I want to thank them too for the holiday card that I just got from them. So, they all signed it and gave me a holiday card. So, thank you all for that. I appreciate it very much. Very thoughtful. And, let's see, what else? Oh, unfortunately, I was not able to make the tour of JFK that we had earlier. It was a conflict and couldn't make it, and I'm very much looking forward to the, to the tour that we're going to be having coming up here on the opening on Thursday. I want to thank the Superintendent because he was aware that I could not attend and said, hey, I'd be willing to take you through privately if you'd like. And so, I want us to say, appreciate that offer, it was very considerate of you. So, thank you. And that concludes what I have to say for now.
Thank you, Mr. Ungeyer. I think one of the students said it was Kayla or Morgan that Buzz is in their build time right now. So, if you want to communicate with them and see what works best, I mean, it might be, you know, in the spring, but we'll definitely keep that, you know, in mind to have them come and be on our agenda. I'd love to, a board guest, I'd love to hear from them on their trip and their recent competition season. So, thank you. Ms. Pickett?
Thank you. I'd like to remind folks that we have Monday, January 16 off. We have this day off to observe the birthday of Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. His actual birthday is on January 15, so we get the bonus of Monday. But I encourage people to check out thekingcenter.org. This center was established in 1968 by Dr. King's wife, Mrs. Coretta Scott King, and the current CEO of the center is his daughter, Dr. Bernice King. It's a great resource to better understand our nation's racial history and prepare for the upcoming Black History Month. Through the chair to the Superintendent, I am interested to know how our Director of Educational Equity is supporting our schools in honoring Black History Month, so I think that could be an interesting topic to hear about as well. Before the holiday, I was able to attend the Gingerbread Event at Stowe. I think I glow every time I talk about Stowe. Ooh, and that rhymes. Stowe is a gem here in Enfield, and even though my kids don't go there anymore, every time I walk into that building, I feel like I'm home. There's a community there. It's obvious between the staff-to-staff interactions, the staff-to-family interactions, the student interactions. So, I just want to thank Jaclyn Valley and the staff at Stowe, the families at Stowe, and the students for welcoming me to their Gingerbread Event. I had a blast, and will go there anytime I can. Enfield Street School, progress reports are coming out tomorrow, so families, I believe that's all done through Power School, right? Like, all access is there. So, please make sure you're logging into Power School, checking out the progress of your students. I know many teachers sent emails to families saying, if you have any questions or concerns to reach out, our staff are amazing. Encourage you to keep up with what your kids are doing in school. There is a PTO meeting on January 12. I also want to remind families, I don't do justice to what Mr. Lord and Ms. Colado do in the newsletter that we get every Friday. So, if you're a family at Enfield Street School and you are not getting the newsletter from the administration, I encourage you to reach out and make sure your email address is added to the list because that Friday newsletter is full of great information, including some assemblies and classroom shout-outs. So, I encourage families to make sure they're on that list. I heard and I saw in our email about the Literacy and Numeracy Family Nights at Prudence Crandall. I love this, and it reminds me of the digital citizenship nights that were had, and I would love to see more of that at each of the schools. As a mom, I will tell you, my son's in second grade, and I'm already struggling with how to help him with math. It's just so different. It's just so different. And thankful to his teacher who sends home the nice little curriculum guides, but I think it would be a really nice chance to get families and students and staff together to better understand, especially the literacy and numeracy curriculums that we're working on. Chris, I look forward to this budget presentation to understand how we're addressing the student and staff needs and our plans. I, of course, love this transition plan. I have a second grader. Not sure if he's going to meet the criteria, but I see the impact that COVID has had on him, especially starting school, that first, he was a kindergartner when we were in the hybrid model. And I have a daughter who's in kindergarten now. And this is no fault of staff, just the impact that that year of hybrid learning and even the year of coming back last school year was really challenging. And I can see the difference in my two kiddos. So I think that this is a really innovative way to target what our needs are and address it. I'm going to do a second plea to Chris's plea. I am begging the amazing staff that are in our schools. I know you already do so much. I know you're tired and probably very burnt out, but I also know the superpowers that you hold and the impact that it has on kiddos. And I'm going to ask you to, like, please do this, because I think it's incredibly helpful and I know the talents that you have. The other piece that I wanted to add about the upcoming budget presentation is, we are also, as a board, shared monthly discipline data from the schools. And I'd like to have a better understanding of how this data is shaping some of those SEL and behavioral health efforts and see what that data looks like disaggregated, who's being impacted, and how are we planning for those unique needs. I'm very disappointed to hear about the summer programming. I get it. So this is going to be my plea to you, Chris, as a mom, maybe more than a board member. I'd really like to see a greedy budget. What would it take to really implement the most robust plan to address the needs of our students? I think for far too long, we've been very cautious on our ask to the town. And the data, as concerning as it was last meeting, shouldn't be a shock to anybody that the trend has been that way. And we can't help but think how budget drives so many of those results. So I'm asking for a greedy budget. I'd like to know what it does it truly take to meet the needs of our students and staff and how can we support that? And then think about where can we make some adjustments? So that's what I have for tonight. Thank you, and I look forward to our budget.
Thank you, Ms. Pickett. Mr. Ryder?
I was also at Stowe for gingerbread house day, and I'm sorry that I missed you there, but we were texting pictures of our creations. I had a great time. So this has been mentioned, but again, progress reports will be available online tomorrow, January 11th. At Eli Whitney, there is a chorus concert scheduled for tomorrow morning at the school, but that's been postponed. There'll be a new date as soon as that's available. The Eli Whitney January PTO meeting is Wednesday, January 18th. Also, for the month of January, Eli Whitney will benefit $1 from every recycled bag purchased at Big Y. So if you buy one of their Big Y reusable shopping bags, a dollar from every purchase will go to the Eli Whitney PTO. Mad Science is starting up again at some of our schools. Eli Whitney, Mad Science starts January 19th. It'll be on Thursdays after school for anyone interested in signing up for the winter session. Finally, at Eli Whitney, as well as at Hazardville, the sister schools are getting together again to do a Build a Mascot event. We did this a couple of years ago, and this was a great thing. Think of Build a Bear, but you'll be building HMS Huskies and Eli Whitney Wolves. You actually get the plush toy, you get the stuffing, you get to build it after school. There'll be two family nights for this. So Eli Whitney will be hosting their Build a Mascot event on February 23rd, which is a Thursday, 6 to 7. And if you're at either school, either the sister schools, you can go to that night. Or again, if you can't make it to that night, you can go to either sister school could go to the HMS night, which is Tuesday, February 28th at 6 o'clock. I just got all the information for that this afternoon, but as soon as tomorrow, you'll be able to go to enfieldpto.com/whitney or enfieldpto.com/hms, and you'll be able to preorder your Build a Mascot kits, so that way you can be all signed up for that. Also regarding Kite, the Heritage Fair is coming up soon, and we have such a diverse community. And what Kite is looking for with this Heritage Fair is for you to come and talk about your family's heritage. What does your family do differently? What does your family, how do they celebrate and what do they celebrate, et cetera? So if you have any interest in getting some of your family members together and for educating the rest of us at Enfield Public Schools and the town of Enfield, because everybody's welcome to Heritage Fair, please reach out to Kite. I'm also going to reach out to all the PTOs again this evening and ask them to put that out to all their families and all their families' pages, because again, we want to have as much representation as we can from all the different cultures from all around the world. So much of that is here in Enfield, and we can share a little bit about ourselves and our families with others. Finally, wreaths across America. Again, I want to thank Pam and her team and Lori Gates and her team. And it's not just the two of them, but they drive this. And it was an amazing ceremony that we got to see after our last Board of Ed meeting. And I want to let everybody know that if you go to any of the enfieldpto.com pages for any school K through JFK, so K-8, all schools have a wreaths across America button on their page. It's like the third or fourth thing down on their page. I left those up because now through January 15th, which is this weekend, you still have an opportunity. If you made a $15 donation before, what you were doing is you were donating a wreath, not to go to the school or to a specific family, but you're donating a wreath that was laid at the grave of a veteran here in Enfield. And now through January 15th, the reason those buttons are still up, there's a two-for-one deal going on. So for the same $15, you'd be donating two wreaths. And this will be for this year's ceremony, which I believe is December 16th, 2023. And if that date is wrong, obviously, it's 11 and a half months away, and we'll correct that. But it's usually that third Saturday of the month. So if you do have a chance, you can go to Eli Whitney, I'm sorry, enfieldpto.com/whitney or slash Crandall slash HMS. Any of the K-2, 3, 5, or JFK PTO pages still has the link up. So for a $15 donation now, you'd be setting aside two wreaths for this coming December. So I just want to let everybody know that you still have a weekend to do that. And any donations are appreciated, of course, but now you'd be getting a two-for-one deal. So that's all I have for this week. Thank you and Happy New Year.
Thank you, Mr. Ryder. I do have a question for my board. Is it cold in here?
Yes.
Are you guys freezing? I don't know if the town council has more people up here and they were warmer than we were, but this is the second meeting in a row. My feet are freezing. Okay. All right. So maybe we can turn the heat up for our board meetings or, I don't know, it's, he's cold, my feet are freezing, and we have new windows now. So I just had to put that out there, make sure I'm not the only one. I just have a really, a few things that are brief, but I joined the Enfield High Student Council Instagram page. So I got to see all the door decorating, which was phenomenal. I personally like the one that looked like a fireplace. Whose door was that?
Well, Ashley, isn't that a Christmas tree? Do you know where it is?
Yeah.
That was Ashley Evans. She's the ninth grade dean.
Oh, okay. That was amazing. But congratulations to Ms. Grouse and her Mary Grinchmas door. I thought that came out wonderful. Again, I appreciate the superintendent giving us that tour of JFK ahead of the grand opening or the grand reopening on Thursday evening, as board members really got to explore the building. Mr. Ungeyer, I'm sorry you missed it. We were really to see the tech ed pieces of it. Ms. Accree and Mr. Kalman absolutely loved the music rooms and looking at all the instruments. And Mrs. Accree was very happy about how the instruments were being stored and just really getting to see the building before everyone is in there. I grew up in Enfield, I went to JFK, and you never thought they could make JFK not look like JFK. It was such a staple building with the hub and the spokes coming out, but when you go in there, it's definitely more functional and it's what the community, families, and staff deserve for our students. There's, you know, some programs there, and I feel like we're more with the times now that we don't have factories anymore with stoves and sewing machines and all that fun stuff, and the space is good. So I want to talk about that. Thank you, Ms. Marsh from Prudence Crandall, who sent the invite for the Crandall Literacy and Numeracy Night. But I want to also say it's a winter pajama party, so if you like pajamas and you're in your pajamas, head on to Prudence Crandall on Wednesday, January 25th from 6 to 7. The snow date on that is Wednesday, February 1st. Thank you, Ms. Accree, for bringing that up. It does say that there's exciting math games, and like I went to the other family engagement, there were math games and they were hard. So be prepared. Thank you to Morgan for giving us the Safeguard update. Ms. Lawler, Morgan covered everything I was supposed to say for the Safeguard update, so I just want you to know I was prepared to do that. One thing I want to talk about, Mr. Drazek, is having the digital citizenship. I know we had spoken about Dr. Wiley coming and giving the presentation she's giving to the schools, so I just don't want to forget to have her come and do that for the board.
Actually, she was scheduled to come this evening, but she had requested to push it off to another meeting because she has more to share. So that'll probably be in February.
February or March, I'm thinking, because next meeting will be our budget presentation. So that'll be a pretty, pretty long meeting. I too have attended some of the Enfield High Girls Basketball Games. Some of them have been very close, but it's exciting and it's exciting to see all the students there. Let's see. I do want to say about United Sound, as I can sit here and think more about their presentation, they started this, but it's with a vision. Again, I have to say that, that anytime a staff member and students work together and they have a vision, it really takes off. So I can't wait to have them back, maybe in the fall or October, and see how that's landed. I'd love an update on that. Let's see. We got an email from a parent, and she was challenging us. She said, it's all fine and good if you sit up here and you report what the PTOs are doing or what school events that you've attended, but have you been able to see the actual connections and the school connections that happen with the staff and the students at the schools? Because that's what really matters, is what's happening in the school day. And I actually have something touching to share, but that I was able to be a part of. But I wanted to check with that staff member because I don't want to violate any privacy issues or I just want to make sure that I can state that correctly. So I just want to say, Ms. Griffin, I hear you, and I would love to share. And I think that is an awesome challenge for the board members. So I appreciate you reaching out. Lastly, many of us tonight are wearing purple, and this is to honor Maddie. And all I can say at this time is, there's nothing that we can say or do to ease the pain, but we wanted you to know by wearing the purple this evening that we are thinking of you and we're sending our deepest sympathies and prayers to your family, her family. Thank you. Moving on, unfinished business. Item A, adopt policy revisions, second reading. Mr. Ryder?
Board members approved the first reading on December 13th of four current policies with proposed revisions. The policies, as always, were placed on the website for public input. So I move to discussion.
I have a motion to accept the second reading of the policy revisions.
So moved?
Moved by Ms. Pickett.
Second.
Second by Mr. Hamri. Dr. Kalman?
Yeah, I just had one very minor, but I think important comment about 5113.2, number 11. It states, provide notice to the parents, guardians, the information concerning the 211 info and other pediatric, mental, and behavioral health screening sources and tools provided by the State Department of Education. I'm a little bit concerned about the inclusion of screening. I believe strongly in screening, obviously, but I think that's probably not the appropriate place to suggest it. If screening really should be done, especially if it's a mental health issue, should always be done in consultation with a primary care provider or a mental health specialist, perhaps a specialist that suggested by 211. But first things first, what's necessary first is contact with a resource, and then screening can be discussed. I know it sounds kind of trivial or kind of picky, but screening when done in isolation can lead to some pretty bad outcomes. So I would suggest the following wording. Refer the parent guardian to the child's pediatric provider or provide information concerning 211 infoline and other mental health resources provided by the State Department of Education.
Mr. Longi?
Unfortunately, that is the reason why this policy's in front of you. Those words are exactly from legislation. So that's why it's there.
Never mind.
Yeah, Dr. J, that probably is something to talk with legislators about. This is the language and it's mandatory.
So why are we voting on it, then?
Because it's a revision of a previous policy that did not include point 11. Point 11 is the new addition to this policy.
And I would just share, I don't, I didn't write this, but 211 infoline, if you're calling, I guess, not just generic 211, but emergency mobile psychiatric services, they're mental health providers, so they would be appropriate people to do screening and such, which is not explicitly stated here, but might be their reasoning. I had an additional, kind of just comment, no issue with the policies, same policy, 5113.2, sorry, the truancy policy, not the same policy. In the policy, it references, the board shall implement a truancy prevention or intervention model. I'd love to, and I think this links back to John, probably your comments and mine during the data presentation, attendance has come up a lot, so I'd love to see if we could get a presentation on that prevention and intervention model that it says we shall implement. I've also noticed it's noted in this policy, and it is in others, where it says that the board shall create some type of district team. In this one, it references a attendance review team. I'd like to have some updates on what those teams, who those teams are and what they're doing and how we might be able to support them.
Those are, you're recommending the changes or you're just commenting?
No changes. I was just commenting. No changes, just noting language. So this is where I think about the duty of the board, right? So it says, the board shall implement a truancy intervention model. The reality is that intervention model is happening at the school level. We're not developing an intervention model. But since we are holding responsibility for those types of things, I'd love to know more about what they are and how they're being implemented.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying. Mr. LeBlanc?
So back on December 13th, when we initially voted on the first reading on these policies, we've now, you know, close to a month removed from that vote. And, you know, after giving it some thought, and here are multiple perspectives on the policies, in particular, a policy that was brought up tonight. I don't know if there will be action taken in the next five minutes on it or not. If there is, I wouldn't be opposed to the, I don't have the policy directly in front of me, but the one that was talked about tonight in relation to the invocation or moment of silence. I think there's a middle ground somewhere there. I can understand the invocation. It was brought up tonight. Maybe just keep it a moment of silence. I'm not opposed to that. I do think if the board was to review it, I would be in favor of keeping a moment of silence on that agenda. So I just kind of wanted that out in the open. If no board action is taken tonight on it, or this board disagrees majority with me tonight, that's okay. It's going to be what it's going to be, but I just wanted my opinion out there on it after giving it some more thought.
Anyone else? Ms. Accree?
Yes, and I do agree with Jonathan and I agree with Mr. Grande that there should be a moment of silence. It has nothing, it's not synonymous to religion. It has nothing, it's not synonymous to religion or prayer, but it is a time for each individual to meditate or reflect on whatever they want at that time.
Ms. Cushman.
Within the Policy Committee, that was my suggestion. I did not vote to move it forward, but it did ask that we just remove the invocation aspect of it and keep the moment of silence. So that was in regards to policy 9325.2. The other policy that I had brought up last month in our discussion was policy 5145.511. And my suggestion was just that the definitions that were given initially introducing this Sexual Abuse Prevention and Education Program, that the definitions be rewritten to be more concise. And as an example, as I read the very end of the, they give an example, or they give the definition of sexual violence as, "Sexual violence is a multi-layered oppression that occurs at the societal and individual level and is connected to and influenced by other forms of oppression, in particular sexism, racism, and heterosexism. On the societal level, it is the preponderance of attitudes, actions, social norms that perpetuate and sustain environments and behaviors that promote a cultural tolerance, acceptance, and denial of sexual assault and abuse. On an individual level, sexual violence is a wide range of sexual acts and behaviors that are unwanted, coerced, committed without consent, or forced either by physical means or through threats." So very verbose definition, and we feel that just the very last sentence really succinctly defines what it is clearly without drawing in a lot of other wordage that seems to make it more confusing. So just to say, "Sexual violence is a wide range of sexual acts and behaviors that are unwanted, coerced, committed without consent, or forced either by physical means or through threats," seems more functional, clear, and concise. So I just would suggest that both 5145 and 9325 go back to policy for revision.
Mr. Ungeyer.
Yeah, I wholeheartedly agree with what Janet says here with regard to that policy. 5145.511, that should go back, the definition is too broad and it causes confusion. I think the version that is more succinct should be what that policy contains. It's very definitive. It's very clear. And to go beyond that is going to cause confusion and misinterpretation, and it's not going to be in our best interests in the future. So it's my feeling that that should go back to the Policy Committee. And then on the policy change with regard to invocation and moment of silence, I heard Janet, Ms. Cushman, say that, you know, she'd be in favor of the, you know, removal of the invocation. I've learned that there are certain public cases, court cases, that challenge invocations in school systems. So as a result of those public court cases, it could represent a risk to the town potentially. But having a moment of silence represents no risk to anyone. And there may be circumstances. Mr. Grande, when you spoke about, I thought it was very telling, when you think about situations that are important, important to this board, important to the lives of our students, that may require a moment of some reflection because we think it's important. And we should have that opportunity to use it if we want, and if we don't want, we don't have to use it. But it should be there, should be available to us. And I don't support this change that removes it entirely. And I think it should go back to the Policy Committee and be rewritten to include, at a minimum, a moment of silence.
I'd like to remind you that a moment of silence is always welcome on our board agenda. It is not being removed completely, and it can be added at any time when a situation arises. So it's not like we're taking it away.
My point is, it shouldn't be a special occasion. We shouldn't have to go to you every time and say, "Well, we'd like to have it added." It should be there always, and whoever has the opportunity to give it, wants to give it, they can, and if they don't, they don't have to.
Right. Mr. Ungeyer, I know what you're doing here. And last night, we had leadership, and this is the first this caucus has heard about it. So I'm concerned as to why this wasn't brought up sooner than the second reading, why it wasn't discussed more towards the first reading, and why this perhaps wasn't discussed in
If discussion's over, I'd like to call the vote.
I'm just waiting.
You waiting for an answer?
Yes. That's the purpose of leadership and meeting regularly.
After leadership, we had a caucus meeting. And at that caucus meeting, we discussed this, okay? And that was the result of our caucus meeting. We didn't have the caucus meeting before our leadership. Had we, then I might have been able to comment on that in our leadership meeting. This is a second reading. I understand that. Okay. Understand that. But we've had more time to look at it. We've had more time to discuss it. And really, isn't that why we have a second reading? Because you have a time in between when you can continue to evaluate these things and look at them, and then if there's any concerns, you can bring it forward. Otherwise, you know, you just pass it the first time around.
No, that's what the time in between the committee meeting, the Policy Committee meeting and the board meeting is for the caucuses to be aware of what is going to be voted on in the Board of Ed meeting.
That's right. And I go back to what I said earlier, was the fact that we had our caucus meeting after our leadership meeting. And today, what you're hearing here on this board is a result from, at least from our caucus, is a result of our meeting after our leadership meeting.
Right, but the policy meeting, when this was discussed, was prior to the first reading. So there was time between that policy meeting and the first reading to have this discussion and have that discussion at the dais before the first reading. Because there's a lot of discussions that are happening between the first and second reading, and typically, they happen before the first reading.
So I just want you to know that I'm not trying, you said, "I know what you're trying to do." I'm not trying to do anything. What I'm trying to do is just give our position, my personal position on these particular policies. That's, I'm not trying to do anything or manipulate anything. I'm just giving, I have an opportunity to give my opinion and how I feel about these policies, and I've done that.
Right. And I was available today to take a phone call ahead of the meeting in honor of working together and transparency and keeping both caucuses aware. I was available to meet today, so, or talk.
Don't talk to me, all right?
Can you guys please, in the audience?
I haven't been talking to you, so don't talk to me.
Any other comments? I would like to clarify that a moment of silence is always welcome on our agenda. Call the question roll call, Kathy.
Mrs. Pickett?
Yes.
Mr. Ryder?
Yes.
Mr. Ungeyer?
No.
Mrs. Akri?
No.
Dr. Kalman?
No.
Mrs. Cushman?
No.
Mr. Hamry?
Yes.
Mr. LeBlanc?
No.
Yes.
Motion fails.
Okay, so this will go back to the Policy Committee?
Actually, all four will.
Okay, all four policies will go back to the committee. Okay, thank you. Item 11, new business. Item 12, there is no new business. Item 12, Board Committee Reports, the Curriculum Committee. Ms. Pickett?
Yes, we have a meeting on January 19th.
Thank you. The Finance Committee, Dr. Kalman?
The Finance and Budget Committee met on January 9th. The 2023 budget was reviewed. The original budget was $73,275,252. The end-of-year projection is $78,921,501.
Can you guys please?
The main drivers of the difference are benefits and special ed tuition. The Nutrition Services financial reports for September, October, and November were reviewed. As of the end of November, the net worth was $1,536,904.38, and the profit was $155,295.90. The issue of free lunches continues to be decided on a monthly basis. With respect to the tag investment, the current value is $2,878,046.50, a loss of $94,904.96 since the last period. That concludes the report.
Thank you, Dr. Kalman. Policy Committee, Mr. Ryder.
Next meets January 31st.
Leadership Committee, the Leadership Committee is meeting regularly once a month before the start of the board meetings for the month. So we had our last meeting last night, and I believe our next meeting is February 9th. Joint Facilities Committee.
Joint Facilities Committee will next meet on January 26th.
Thank you. JFK Building Committee.
The JFK Building Committee news is that they have invited all of us, as well as the public at large, to please join us on Thursday night at 6:00 in the auditorium of the new JFK. We'll hear from some of the people that had a hand in helping us get that done, and the public will get a chance to tour the facilities.
Thank you. Joint Security Committee, Mr. Ryder.
We met in December. We do not have a new date, but we do meet quarterly, so I assume we'll be getting a date soon.
The Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Work Group, Dr. Kalman?
Yes, first, a correction in the agenda. The committee is identified as the Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Work Group. That's the name of the group currently.
Can we just pause for a moment? Alex, could you cut the feed? To resume, thank you. Okay, starting over, the Enfield Mental Health Wellness Work Group, Dr. Kalman?
Okay, again, a correction. The Enfield Mental Health and Wellness Group is the name of the group currently working under the auspices of the Enfield Department of Social Services. This committee is a Board of Education initiative, so I think we agreed on just the Mental Health Committee. Unfortunately, for a number of reasons, the Mental Health Committee has been largely inactive. And perhaps since the beginning of the year, this might be a good time for the board to consider what we seek to achieve with this committee. Specifically, what is its mandate? Who should be on the committee? Who should provide mental health services? How should services be delivered directly by a mental health provider or in the context of a school-based mental health center? To whom should services be offered? To students only, or also to teachers, or perhaps to all school personnel? Madam Chair?
So based on the information, or the non-information that's coming out of the Enfield Mental Health Wellness Work Group, we were wondering if we could have a follow-up to the SEL presentation that was given in the fall, you know, about different strategies. And some of the board members had additional questions. The other item, we've talked about forming our own mental health committee, and we don't certainly want to duplicate efforts. So we don't know how best to have liaisons, as far as like Board of Ed liaisons, to go and assist with that or be informative. This used to be a really deep partnership with social services, and we just don't have that partnership anymore. And we know that mental health is a top priority in our schools, and it's a very high concern of kids, all ages, since the pandemic and just with, you know, social challenges they have to live through. So, Mr. Dreszek, I'm going to be asking you, what options do we have as far as either forming our own or becoming a part of one that's already formed within the district? So those are the opportunities we're looking for. Dr. Jerry has conveyed to me that he's just very concerned at the direction of the current Mental Health and Wellness Committee. I haven't spoken to Ms. Akri, but at one point, she had expressed those same sentiments. So we have, you know, dedicated people here, retired pediatrician, a retired educator, that could definitely offer some advice, some thoughts, and... Yeah, let's utilize them, so, guidance. But it would be great to know if we had some sort of, we could get some sort of feedback from them on the initiatives that the school is taking. We also talked about, and not only is our students' mental health important, but our staff's mental health is important, too, because they also lived through the pandemic. The teaching profession is a very hard profession right now. People are just leaving the profession. So we just kind of want to make sure the mental health as a whole, both the students and staff, are being taken care of. And so those were just kind of our concerns that we wanted to put out there this evening under that committee. So, thank you. And then lastly, the Enfield Cultural Arts Commission, Mr. Hamry?
So buckle up, this is going to be a minute. First thing, there's going to be a Poetry in Enfield event happening at Enfield High School through the English and World Language Departments coming up on January 26th. It's going to feature one of the members of the ECAC as one of the judges, and looking forward to that quite a bit. As several up on the dais here mentioned earlier, several, I can't remember which ones exactly, I think it was Dr. Kalman and Mr. Ryder, there is the Heritage Fair meeting. I owe a severe and sincere apology to Amy and all involved. I was not able to attend this past Monday's meeting, and I did not communicate that to them in advance. So I apologize that I wasn't able to attend, but they are very much in the thick of it in terms of planning that cultural affair and bringing everything to life at the new JFK. Excuse me. There's going to be an open mic event happening. They're putting, the ECAC is working with a couple of local musicians to host an open mic event as a preliminary, one-time thing, but it looks like it's most likely going to be a monthly thing, if not more often, to bring some activities into town and get some events to gather around, to bring out that guitar, so to speak, and make things happen. Excuse me, I apologize. Speaking of the ECAC and one of the local artists that came out to speak recently, Chris Tetrault has a showing, if you will, at the Pearl Street Library. He's a very talented artist with both his paintings and his woodwork. So there's a display of both available at the Pearl Street Library. I encourage as many people to stop by and check it out as can be. Mural Project, there's a mural project that's in development to bring murals to town. And too early to say exactly what that's going to look like, but they're in the phase of figuring out the budget and how to go about vetting for the right artist on the right exterior wall of whatever building. So there's a lot going on there. And one thing, in the many hats I wear, I was invited to attend a volunteer appreciation dinner at the Loaves and Fishes, Enfield Soup Kitchen, and I had the privilege of sitting next to a gentleman named Russ, and I, for the life of me, can't remember his last name. But we had a discussion about his... But we had a discussion about his viewpoint of how Enfield has a Hall of Fame for athletics that goes back, I don't know how long, and that every year or so, there's a dinner and an event that brings out all of the next round of athletes that are being inducted into the Hall of Fame for athletes. And he said, why don't we do anything like that for artists? So that started a conversation that I brought to the ECAC, and I can't say anything's going to come of it, but it was well-received among the committee. And it's a, to say it's in its infancy is an understatement. It's a long way off, but it was a wonderful discussion that was met with real strong enthusiasm. So I would love to see that happen. To the point of the arts, if you get involved in a art capacity, excuse me, theatrical arts, for example, like I've been involved in for years, you tend to meet some really incredible people, and they tend to spread their wings and go places with their thing, with their craft. And in this case, to coincide with Dr. King's weekend coming up, I want to just brag about a friend of mine that's involved in a production of a show called Hear Her Songs for Freedom. It's not happening locally, but that's the nature of art. You go where the art is and experience it where it is. And with the ECAC and the Opera House players, we're trying to bring that all into town here. So one example of where you might want to travel to learn about a really impressive production is to the Cambridge Multicultural Arts Center coming up next weekend, I believe it is, yeah, the 13th through the 16th. And it's starring Natasha Ellis as Coretta Scott King singing her songs. The way that they were able to fund a lot of the work that Dr. King had done was through the concerts that Coretta Scott King performed at and sponsored. So this production of Sing Her, excuse me, Hear Her Sing for Freedom, again, happening at the Cambridge Multicultural Arts Cultural Arts Center this coming weekend, it's not a free show, so look at the websites and you'll find the ticket prices. They do have an online viewing happening Monday, but the other events are happening Friday, Saturday, and I believe there's a total of four shows over the two or three days. So I only mention that first to brag on a friend, but to also give you an example of what can happen when things come together and the talented circle that is growing within the Enfield community. I believe Natasha has been involved in at least one, she's been involved in several local productions where I've done the sound, but I think she's been involved with the Opera House players. And therefore, again, that circle widens as the productions that happen and the events come to fruition. So that's it for the ECAC, and I appreciate allowing me to take the time to talk about these things.
Do you have a question for Josh? Yeah, okay, yeah, because I do too. Go ahead.
Not necessarily a question, but to think like a few weeks back, this wasn't even a committee on the agenda, and then to have an update like that, it shows it's going in the right direction. So that's, I like hearing that.
Thank you, and I appreciate that, because one of the things, this is what I envisioned it when I first talked with Councilor Santinella over a year ago. And it was all about that, bringing it together, bringing it to fruition, letting people know that among the wider community, there's wonderful art, and it is not separate from what happens within our schools. Our local schools, our children, student performers, and backstage and talented musicians and everybody, they make these happen, and they become these people that are outside, that do these things outside our area, and maybe Broadway. You know, one of these days, they will take a touring show somewhere, and they will see things and do things, and some get into Disney and perform at Disney, some go on cruises and perform for cruise shows. There's a world out there that this is how they get to it, and I'm happy that this is happening, that we got to this point, and it was never about the money that, because I'm not, I'm not doing this at an expense for the board. You know, I'm not watching any bean counting because it's happening anywhere. You know, we're getting grants and making things happen because it's the love of the art, not because we have money to burn. There's just a drive for it, there's a talent for it, and when you put it all together and then market it and highlight it, let people know about it, it will eventually, hopefully, grow on its own, become an organically growing thing and live life from there.
Just a couple comments that I have on it. When you mentioned like Opera House players or different groups like that in town, I learned over the years that it's a familial event, like it's an entire family that you'll have some acting in the play, you'll have some, you know, working the lights, you'll have others working on the costumes. So it's something that the family does together. It's not just something that one member of the family does. Even with the local artists, you mentioned Chris, his family is really, that's a very artistic family because Aiden plays the amazing xylophone. So it's definitely something that is a family, is a family thing.
We have a current family, the Berry family, that has been very much involved in both the school productions and Opera House productions and beyond, and they're ridiculously talented. They are involved in costume design, prop building. I do sound, by the way, not lights.
Sorry.
But lighting when necessary. There's, it is a familial thing, because the parents either bring the passion to the child, or the child finds it on their own, and the parents get drawn into it and learn it from the child, which is even better, in my very personal biased opinion. So.
As a matter of fact, Michelle, I would see her parents go off to watch her perform when she was in college. So it was amazing to see that. The other thing is, we've talked about, is having the ECAC as guests, so we can talk about, you know, partnerships or different initiatives that are going along with them and our schools. I know, again, I've said it, Mr. Rapucci is happy to have this partnership. Also, when are the meetings? Are they open to the public?
They are open to the public. Matter of fact, the most recent meeting was, I thought I had written that down here, I believe it was this past Monday. I apologize, it happens twice, no, once a month, and I really, if I don't have my calendar sitting right in front of me, I have to.
That's fine. If you wouldn't mind, if you could let the board know in case the board members might want to attend a meeting.
Absolutely. It was a discussion, by the way, at the ECAC meeting about the chair attending our board meetings, so they're tracking and they're interested and eager to be a part of it, too.
Perfect.
Well, everybody's happy about this.
We would love to attend a meeting that we can just sit and watch, we want to learn things. The other thing I wanted to note is the Enfield Athletic Hall of Fame. My dad had been involved with that, and I'm sure there are plenty of people you can reach out to if you go to their website. I know Tim Jensen is one, that they can maybe give you some of the startup ideas that they had or growing pains that they had in starting that. I know they have specific criteria before you can be inducted into that, so they might be able to lend you some advice in setting that up. But again, that's thinking outside the box, and I think that's an amazing idea, and I can't wait to see that take off, so.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you. I don't think there's any additional committees. Item 13, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the regular Board of Ed meeting minutes from December 13th, 2022? Moved by Mr. Ungeyer.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. Any discussions? Show of hands? Okay, Dr. Jerry. Item 14, approval of accounts and payroll. And I'm telling everyone watching, this is for the month of November and December, so get comfortable.
Okay, thank you. The finance committee met on January 9th, 2023 to review financial statements for the month of November, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion. I move, we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of November, total expenditures amount to $6,729,197.39, broken down between payroll totaling $4,712,870.66, and other accounts totaling $2,016,326.73. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. Show of hands?
Certification of grants and head start expenditures. The finance committee met on January 9th, 2023 to review financial statements for grants during the month of November, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion. I move, we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of November, the total grant and head start expenditures amounted to $757,966.87, broken down between payroll totaling $617,892.19, and other accounts totaling $140,074.68. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. All in favor?
Certification of expenditures. The finance committee met on January 9th, 2023 to review financial statements for the month of December, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion. I move, we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of December, total expenditures amount to eight, excuse me, $6,855,845.91, broken down between payroll totaling $4,674,899.58, and other accounts totaling $2,180,946.33. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Second.
Second by Ms. Pickett. All in favor?
Certification of grants and head start expenditures. The finance committee met on January 9th, 2023 to review financial statements for grants during the month of December, year-to-date, and to examine various documents related to finances. Our review concluded that there is nothing significant to report to the board. Motion. I move, we accept the superintendent's certification as follows. I hereby certify that in the month of December, the total grant and head start expenditures amounted to $698,524.30, broken down between payroll totaling $612,390.20, and other accounts totaling $86,134.10. All payments have been made in accordance with the approved budget and are properly accounted for within the books of accounts. Copies of approval for check invoices are properly documented.
Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Pickett. All in favor? Thank you, Dr. Jerry. Item 15, correspondence and communications. There is nothing. Item 16, Mr. Dreszek, do we have a need for executive session?
We do not.
Okay. Item 17, adjournment, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Ms. Pickett, seconded by Mr. Hamery. Show of hands? Thank you, have a good night.